Good morning, everybody. Today is Thursday, October the 22nd, 2015. It's 8:30 a.m. This is our regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. First item on our agenda is calling this meeting to order, so I'd like to call it to order and then ask the clerk to please call the roll. Go ahead, clerk.
Commissioner Antor. Walter.
Appreciate her.
Breevy.
Here.
Lokowski.
Present.
Chivas.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Coleman.
Mask.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Softow.
Here.
Schroll.
Here.
Steck.
Here.
Talon.
Here.
Vandermolen. Vonk.
Yes.
Voorhees. Chair.
Present. All right, the next item on our agenda is invocation of call on Commissioner Chivas.
This is the first time I've written the invocation myself in my five years of being a commissioner, and this is my sixth invocation. So this one was a little bit difficult for me to come up with. I tried, I thought about everything and all sorts of approaches, and so I hope you enjoy this one. If we could all bow our heads and pray to our Creator. "We come before you today preparing to make decisions that affect the citizens of this county. We ask you for the strength to adapt to changing circumstances. We ask for the empathy to understand the other point of view, and we ask for the wisdom to make the right decision for everyone. As we approach winter, we take this time to remember our ancestors and our roots and strive to behave in a way that honors this. Finally, to you we give thanks for all of our blessings which stem from you, and all God's people said amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now up to item five on our agenda, Special Order of Business. Today's Special Order of Business is the Convention Arena Authority Annual Update. And with us today, we have Steve Ecock and Rick Nguyen, who are the two appointments from this board to the CAA, and also Rich McKeegan. So, welcome all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great to be here. It's frankly like coming home. And I once again want to tell each and every one of you that how much we appreciate the service that you provide. I do have some understanding of what it means and how it's long nights reading and early mornings meeting and interacting with citizens pretty much every minute in between, and it is greatly appreciated because the work you do is important. Part of the work you do is the Convention Arena Authority. And Dan and I were just talking, it's astounding to me how important this entity has been to the county and to the city of Grand Rapids and the state of Michigan, and how much you ought to be patting yourselves on the back for having the foresight to make it occur. There was a time when Flint and Grand Rapids looked pretty much the same, when their futures looked about the same. And we took a very different direction than they did, and there are a lot of reasons for that. But one of the reasons was, we had people willing to invest in the downtown area to make it better. So that's really what we're here to talk to you about, is one of those, one of those big key drivers of change that have created the positive involvement and why you ought to have a statue of Daryl and others up who put this together years ago. So, it's getting to be a bigger statue though. So we, I do love the man, so I think I'm allowed to tease. Let me start real quick, and then I'm going to turn it over to Rick Nguyen, who will talk the finances, and then he will turn it over to Rich McKeegan, who will talk about current operations and kind of what's going on, where things are. I will then finish up with time, obviously, for questions and thoughts and any discussion you might want to have. So that's our, that's our intent. Just to remind you, and you all know this, I know, but it's a good reminder because you deal with so many things and have so many issues in front of you. The Convention Arena Authority, it's actually the Grand Rapids Kent County Convention Arena Authority, a nice, short, catchy name. It was established pursuant to a state act, Public Act 205 of 1999. For those of you there, it was frankly a huge political issue. Nothing like this had ever been done. It was the combination of work of both the city and county and private sector, and then the state stepped in to help in a big way as well. But, but this act, by the way, has been modeled by about 15 different communities around the country, including Detroit, when they regionalized the Cova Hall effort. And it's because it was good thinking, and it was a good collaborative effort that created a positive result. So again, please accept congratulations. It is a statutory authority, meaning it is a government. It is a government without taxing authority, but it's a government nonetheless, and we are appointed by, by you and not elected directly. We were created to encourage economic development within West Michigan by owning and operating convention, entertainment, and sports facilities, and will maintain and show you today why we think that's exactly what we've done. So, the structure of the CAA, Dan mentioned, Mr. Chair mentioned, that we do have a seven-member Board of Directors. Two of us are appointed directly by you, and just like with the Airport Authority you just talked about, you have the right to remove us, you have the right to appoint somebody else if in fact we're doing things you don't like, and that you don't believe we're doing our job and doing our job well. And we accept that, that in fact you have that right and interact with you. It's one of the reasons we like to come annually, to see, know what's going on, where things are. Rick and I are delighted to be your appointments. Frankly, we're the two best members of the board, so you've done well. The other appointments include one by the Governor of Michigan. You'll recall that when this thing was funded, the Michigan, state of Michigan came up with $65 million to help with the expanded convention center. The governor retained a right to name somebody to the board for that reason, and it's gone through a number of people today. It is Charlie Sekia. Charlie was appointed by Governor Rick Snyder and is doing phenomenal work with the board as well. Two members are appointed by the city of Grand Rapids. The mayor himself has traditionally served and does, and when I started serving, I was chair of this board, so we had the chair and the mayor on that board, as much for, for kind of view, perspective as anything else. But the mayor's continued that service. Obviously, I've been succeeded by far more talented people, so it's, the mayor's there as well as very close. One of their appointments has to be somebody knowledgeable about economic development in Grand Rapids. There's nobody more knowledgeable about economic development in Grand Rapids. So Bergert's on the board, and then two are appointed, did I mention, by the other five members? So, they wanted to get, the idea was to get some private input, because 44 million, as I remember, came from the private sector, that funding, and there was a keen interest to keep it connected to the private community, knowing that in fact it would be involved directly. So, the CVB has the right to nominate people, and the other two members are selected by that list that are nominated by the CVB. Would have been grand action, but nobody knew frankly how long it would last, whether it had a whole life or we knew we would have an experience Grand Rapids or a convention business bureau of some kind. So those two members are Lou Chamberlain, the owner of the Whitecaps, and obviously somebody very knowledgeable about ticket-type events and things with the general public, and then Floyd Wilson from Metro, and Floyd provides a great insight to us in a number of ways and things, expert in human resources among other things, so we very much enjoy his involvement. We employ all of one full-time employee, one part-time employee. Sue Widdell is our full-time employee, manages the meetings and the minutes and those kind of things, and we do everything else through contract. Our half-time employee is Bob White, who was formerly of the county, who was formerly of the city, who knows the history of this as well as about anybody there is, and provides great work from some sunny location on the east coast, so, but, but we get, it's a great contract, we greatly appreciate it. We contract with SMG. SMG is the world's largest and best promoter of events within facilities, and they manage facilities all over the world, and we have an incredible director. And let me introduce the two guys that are going to speak next, because I won't have the chance to introduce Rick directly, or Rich directly, rather. So, so first of all, the structure is as you see, we, we answer to the citizens first, the Kent County Commission and the Grand Rapids Commission, and the board does have its staff. We run by committee, frankly, patterned very much after the county processes. Worked here, it works there. The two people are going to speak and spend more time and more important time with you. Rick Nguyen is one. Rick is the president of all of the Amway Grand Hotel properties and, and has an incredible knowledge of why people stay in rooms, and how you encourage people to stay in rooms, and how you get them to come to our community to participate in the events here, and so is an ideal appointment by you to that board. Obviously, you've all looked at his resume, you've all decided he was a good appointee or you wouldn't have appointed him, and so I greatly appreciate that. But he's got an incredible mind for finances, doesn't forget a number, is always looking forward, has really added a great deal, and does chair a finance committee. Rich McKeegan's also going to speak. Rich is with us from SMG. They are the hired management company that we've used almost from the beginning. At the very beginning, there was a city employee that did events within, within the entities. SMG has come in and run those and run those incredibly well. It gives us two advantages. One, when there are national things going on, SMG's big and powerful enough to be part of it, so we'll get a lot of events and activities and acts that we wouldn't get otherwise because they're involved. But two, for a reasonable price, we get excellent, excellent local management. And we have one of the best, and I know I've now said that about six times, but frankly, I mean it, and it's the, it's what, it's what I learned from Daryl, it's what I learned from Kent County. You hire the best, you get the best people in place, you make them happy, and you keep them, keep them working, and things, things work out great. That's the case here. Rich has been a star within SMG, has turned down, you know, chances to go to Detroit, Cleveland, Fresco, Philadelphia a couple of times, to stay here and to run this operation. Our task is always to keep it interesting enough for him, but so far, so good. So, let me, with that, introduce Rick Nguyen, and he'll walk through some of the numbers for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Keegan. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm happy to be here. Thank you for your appointment. I do forget a couple of numbers once in a while, so that's not exactly true, but the first slide I'll start with, as you know, the $20 million-plus invested reserves that's designated for future capital and repair projects. The next slide. One second. What happened? The next slide, the important number to look at is the very bottom right and column number, which is the balance of those funds as of June 30th, our fiscal year, so $21,433,667. So I, you know, I have to say that Rich and his team are really doing a good job of stewarding the finances for the CAA. This spreadsheet we created a few years ago, just to map out, as Steve said, the future. And this, when we started until today, you'll see the first balance is now actually a million dollars more. We've gained about five years of timing on this spreadsheet since we started this about five years ago. So, each year, and this is what we would consider hopefully a conservative spreadsheet for us to look at. So we update this every year, just to keep our eye on the ball. So this is just the economic impact of the CAA, your investment for 2011. The total economic impact was 58.4 million, generating 700 jobs and 16.6 million in new earnings for Kent County. I think when you extrapolate that over 10, 11 years that this has been in place, this is really a dynamic economic engine, and we really appreciate it. Financial assistance, as you know, the CAA gives $75,000 to Experience Grand Rapids and then $50,000 to the West Michigan Sports Commission, both of which I chair the Experience Grand Rapids currently. So I really am dialed into hotels, you know, the convention center, how we book business, how do we really create, you know, the dynamics of getting the hotels full. And obviously, when the hotels are full, revenue is there, Daryl points out many times, you know, that's what drives the tax and ultimately pays the bonds. So that really is our ultimate goal. This, this slide is really just to point out that there are three entities that get together, the hotels, the convention center, and then EXGR. And what we try to do is really how, how to go about filling the convention center and filling the downtown hotels with national, regional groups. Because once we do that, what happens is the occupancy spreads out into the county. And I can tell you that over the last, well, in 2008, when the, we all know the recession hit, this community was about 47% occupancy. Our last report, we are now almost at 70% occupancy. So this, really this investment that the city and the county, that all of you made years ago, is really paying dividends. And I think, I've got a couple of statistics. I know probably Doug shared these with you, but it bears repeating. Our competitive set that we use is Cincinnati, Columbus, Detroit, Hartford, Albuquerque, Lansing, Louisville, Memphis, Milwaukee, Pittsburgh, and Kansas City. We currently, year-to-date, are leading every single one of those competitive sets. So we have more occupancy in our city than any of those. We are leading Michigan. We are at almost 70%. Michigan's at 62 overall, so we're leading the state. And for the first time ever, we're actually leading the United States. The United States overall is at 67, so we're two points ahead of them. So I mean, the efforts that have been going on and the investments that everyone has made, excuse me, has really, we are really reaping the benefits today of those investments. So, thank you. I'll turn it over to Rich.
I'm going to whiz through what I would say is the fun stuff, because I'm not a numbers guy. The rink has been around, it's almost 20 years old now. 19 years old. Griffin's just started up, won their first game last night, so that's good news. Go Griffin's. The building has received a number of awards over the years. The one thing I'd like to call attention to is the bottom one in red. With social media continuing to evolve as a primary source to connect with ticket buyers, our little rink is viewed competitively amongst other facilities nationwide as having a better handle on that whole world than most others. There's a power ranking that this industry magazine puts together, and we are ranked fourth, and that I take great pride in. Building 12, basically 12,000 seats, 42 suites, two public suites, we've got banquet rooms, we've got a sports bar called the Intermission that's open, we've got over 600,000 people coming out on an annual basis. The shows that I've listed there and have got photos for, these are just the sold-out shows for the fiscal year last. So this is July 1 of '14, June 30 of '15. Good shows, Steve referenced. I say that we fight above our weight class. For a community our size, for a facility our size, we're doing really, really good business. Lots of family shows. Disney and Ice continues to come back. We've had the convention center, convention center is now 11 years old, actually, completely. But last year, we did have a 10-year anniversary open house. It was free to the public, free hot dogs and Pepsi for kids, actually for everyone that showed up, and it really was a great family event, an opportunity for people to come in. The idea here is, can we get these folks in if they've never been before, so that they can get accustomed to how to get in, where to park, which bus stop to get off, whatever the case may be? So when the Home and Garden Show comes back, and maybe they'll think about coming, they've got a comfort level to come. So again, as you can see, the diversity of activities that took place, it really was a great community event that we've been very, very proud of. Had all kinds of our stakeholders there, our partners. It, it was hugely successful from our perspective. So then at the rink, we're coming up on 20 years, there are plans to celebrate the 20-year anniversary next fiscal year, and that plan is already starting. As I mentioned, the hockey team, Calder Cup champions a couple of years ago. Continue to have a lot of back and forth with the Red Wings, which does tremendous things for the awareness. You can't watch a Red Wings game without hearing Grand Rapids being referenced two or three times, and whether that's on Fox North, Fox Sports Detroit, or that's on NBC nationwide, Grand Rapids is being referenced because of the back and forth on a regular basis. That does well for our community when we're selling conventions, when I'm selling concerts. We've also got, excuse me, four arts tenants. For a community our size to have four active arts tenants is significant. Much, communities much larger than ours are losing their arts tenants left, right, and center. So we're very pleased and proud to be the home of Opera Grand Rapids, Broadway Grand Rapids, the Grand Rapids Ballet, and the Symphony, Grand Rapids Symphony. I'm not doing my job if I'm not selling, and we've got our Wine Festival coming up. The Wine Festival is the weekend before Thanksgiving, I think it's November 17, 18, 19, at your place setting, are, I think, four tickets for the wine show. I would encourage you to find someone who hasn't been there yet and pass them along. We really are trying to get those that have not experienced the wine show to come out and take a look at it. It has been tremendously successful. We're about 20,000, 15,000 people over the course of the three days. It's done very, very well for us, and we only see more growth coming up. Again, number of events that we do at the convention center. Art Prize continues to be a great asset for us, not just the community, but the convention facility as well. We had about 130 artists in the convention center. I think that was the most by 40 to 50 artists than any other facility. One thing that we've done unique is art curation for the convention center, the beautification, the art, public art, has been a priority for the CAA and the community since the convention center opened. So what we have done instead, to remove some of the politi, the politics of procuring art, is we've basically adopted Art Prize as our curator. So what we have done is purchased pieces that have hung during Art Prize and then worked with a local gallery to find good locations for it around the convention center. So when you go around and walk the convention center, you may see this QR code beside or below the piece of art. You can then scan it. That takes you right to this webpage that tells you about the artist, tells you about the art, and it enhances the beautification of the facility. It gives us a natural partnership with Art Prize for art procurement, and I think it's another nice story to tell when we got visitors in from out of town, because then they're going to start asking about Art Prize and hopefully come back and stay with us again. Coming up new, we've done some work in DeVos Place, excuse me, in DeVos Performance Hall, the Keeler Lobby. We renovated the disabled lift on the south side to match the one on the north side. The best, the best example of how, or the best demonstration of how well that's been received is we've had no comments whatsoever. It looks like it's been there the whole time. With the exception of the guests that utilize it, they've been very vocal in the fact that this is a great asset. So we've been very pleased with that. And then we've also expanded the ability to remove the symphony's concert shell to accept larger shows. So Phantom of the Opera's coming in, that was signed, so we call it our Phantom Project. And it wasn't just that, it was additional weight-bearing capacity of the floor, additional weight-bearing capacity of the steel. But it's also helped, we just had Newsies in about two, three weeks ago. Newsies was able to take advantage of this modification, and it made their load-in and load-out much, much easier. So, those are a couple of major things that have just happened at the Performance Hall that we're seeing strong, strong benefits from already. And with that, again, I whizzed through that really quickly, and there is time hopefully for questions, but I'll ask Steve to close it up.
I know we probably take more time than we were meant to, we're just excited about this stuff. I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Questions this morning, Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. It's not a question, but just an observation, that there's one thing about the CAA that I think you neglected to mention, and I want to, and that's the, what I've experienced to be the leadership that you've provided on making downtown a more diverse and inclusive place. I really appreciate that. I've seen that in some of the concert offerings, I've seen that in some of the events you've helped sponsor downtown to help facilitate, and I've seen that in, even in the Art Prize offerings. The DeVos Place is an outstanding venue, and I really appreciate the diversity of artists that, that you've encouraged to show their work there. So, I think that's, that's an amazing thing and something to really be recognized as part of the work of the CAA, so I want to compliment you on it.
You know, that's a, that's a great comment, greatly appreciated. Darius Quinn, of course, chairs, has chaired the Community Inclusion Group for the CAA and done a tremendous job, and the whole idea of that group was, let's figure out a way to make downtown more comfortable for people of color. And, and it's not, it's not just altruistic, it certainly is the right thing to do, but it's also about marketing. I mean, we had a whole segment of the population we weren't reaching with some of our shows, and so why in the world would you do that? Why would you exclude yourself from that market? So, we have made a concerted effort, and I'm delighted that you've noticed it. The number of events is phenomenal. We'll send the list back out to you guys so you can see it on, on what that group has done and where it's going, and the future's even brighter than the past. Thanks, Chair.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair. Steve, welcome. Thanks for being here. My question's more going out, you know, into the future. Experience Grand Rapids looks at hotels throughout the county. When conferences come to town, they more so are more focused on the hotels downtown. With the footprint that we've got with the, the arena and DeVos Place, is it larger than what the capacity of the hotels, so it's being underutilized because larger conferences don't come in to utilize the space because there's not enough core downtown hotels? Or is it vice versa, that, you know, it's, it's there and we've got too many hotel rooms downtown? I mean, what's the balance? What does it look like going to the future? Are we missing opportunities, or do we need to do one of the two, two things? Expand the DeVos Place or expand into and attract another larger hotel that can accommodate larger groups?
First of all, it's wonderful thinking.
Well, I know it's a loaded question.
No, it's a great question. And in fact, the capacity of the center has been more than the hotel rooms to date, so we actually have room for more. Part of that is that while we don't feel this way here, for most people coming in from 28th Street or from Rockford is not a big deal. You know, that it's not, it's the equivalent or less than the commute they're used to. So we can, in fact, place people in those outer areas. But the continued growth in hotel rooms is a positive thing, and we can still manage the capacity. We are not at a point where we, where we believe we need to update the center for size in the next 15 years, 20 years, so.
Well, it should be noted as well, Commissioner, that the Experience Grand Rapids, as part of their strategic plan, is commissioning basically an assessment of current availability as well as a needs assessment moving forward. So they're doing exactly that. It's a lot, right now, I think, I think with a high level of comfort and confidence, there's anecdotal information and data that can be shared. The intent with this work is to actually drill down and find exactly what is available and what is needed. I think there's new, I know there's new inventory coming online within the county as far as hotels go. One thing that I think we collectively, between the hotel community, Experience Grand Rapids, and SMG have done a good job on, is continuing to tout the good news that we've had relative to the occupancy rate. With new inventory coming in, you may see a flattening or decline of occupancy rate, but I think that's a natural progression, that's a natural growth element, and that then starts another curve with a higher apex. So, what you've identified is exactly where we are collectively with Experience Grand Rapids and is being worked on and commissioned today. We hope that within the next few months, we've got a report to demonstrate exactly what is available and what is needed. And it will be assessing not just the convention facility and the hotels, but it'll be assessing all possible assets that meeting planners use. all possible assets that meeting planners use while they're in Kent County. So that will extend to places like Meyer Gardens. And not just that the Gardens needs to get bigger, but they have hosted a number of off-site events for conventions. And does that, do we need more of those type of facilities? So that's in the works right now. I think we're very much on the same page.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments this morning? All right, see nothing? Thank you very much for your work. We truly appreciate it, and we will continue to work hard to PR all the great things that we have available here with the arena and DeVos Place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, we'll move to item six on our agenda, public comments. If anyone from the public would like to address this body, please step to the podium. Name and address, please, and you have up to three minutes.
Good morning, Board. My name is Robert Christie. My address is 3245 Softwater Lake Drive, Northeast Grand Rapids, Michigan. Three years ago, I started a divorce in this county. My former spouse is an employee of Kent County Human Resources. Prior to our divorce, during our marriage, this employee had brought a number, large number of employee files, including FMLA and other secure documents, from the county and stored them in our home and on my personal computers that I use for business. At the beginning of this divorce, this employee contacted through the county and her supervisor the Kent County Sheriff's Department Prosecutor's Office and stated that I had stolen Kent County files. After this, with no charges being filed, no warrants or nothing, no hearings, two officers from Kent County Sheriff's Department entered my home without a search warrant. No search warrant, period. No charges. Confiscated my property, which did hold files, and kept it. They had not returned it. This was also used against me, even though no charges were ever filed, there was never a court hearing, nothing. This was held against me during my divorce. Since then, a number of things have happened, and I've kept you all up to date, but nobody responds other than to say, don't we have a restraining order against this man to keep him from contacting us? Or, I'm not going to accept any complaints against my people. You have done nothing about this. I recently filed a $7 million lawsuit against Kent County for actions also based on this. It turns out that I missed the statute of limitations by one month. But the judge did question facts surrounding this, which included activity that is not allowed by a court recorder. I've tried to make complaints against employees, nobody will take complaints, nobody will do anything. How many thousands of dollars does Kent County spend to protect itself against citizens who are damaged by Kent County employees that nothing happens to the employees? Can you answer that question for me, please?
We don't take, we don't have an interaction here, Mr. Christie. We just take comments, and we could respond to those after this meeting is over through our legal council.
Okay. Speaking of legal counsel, I received an email from Mr. Duxey that informed me that he has contacted all of you and told you not to contact me or have conversation with me. First Amendment of the Constitution guarantees your right of petition to your government. And now you are being told not to talk to me, not to allow my petition. And again, is a civil rights violation. Do I have to file charges against Kent County in federal court for civil rights violations? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments this morning under public comment? All right, see nothing? We'll move to our consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Shevus.
Thank you, Chair. I move the consent agenda items A, B, and C.
To the fore. Motion by Commissioner Shevus, support by Vice Chair Salfeld. Anything on here, commissions would like to remove? All right, see nothing? This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bolter?
Yes.
Reevee?
Yes.
Flukowski?
Yes.
Shevus?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Sofel?
Yes.
Schroll?
Yes.
Steck?
Yes.
Talan?
Yes.
Vonk?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes, that carries. We'll now move to item eight, our resolutions, and I will call on Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Corndyke. I would move Resolution 93 of today's date in agreement with Spectrum Health for the operation and maintenance of the Fuller Complex powerhouse. This comes from Facilities Management.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Voorhees, support by Commissioner Morgan. Questions or comments? Commissioner Bolter?
Due to my employment, I need to abstain from this vote.
Anything else? All right, this is not a roll call vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes, sorry. I thought you counted it earlier, sorry.
That carries. Well, now, I'll now call on Commissioner Mast.
I move Resolution 94, which is the modification of our Facilities Management policy. I move that resolution that we have before us.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Mast, support by Commissioner Schroll. Questions or comments on this resolution? See nothing? This is not a roll call vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That carries. I'll now call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 95 from the Fiscal Services. It's a notice of intent to issue capital improvement bonds for building infrastructure.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, support by Commissioner Voorhees. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Mast?
Can I just make a comment? I guess, you know, we talked about it quite a bit at the Finance Committee, the fact that this does not obligate us at this point, this just begins the process so that we can begin to get figures relative to design and development issues for a lot of projects that really we need to do. And then, plus, all of that work gets, can get rolled into the bonds, and I understand that that's the main reason we're doing it.
So this came out of our space needs study report that we did in May?
Right, right. Yeah, so I just kind of reflect on that. And then, yeah. Well, I was going to say, I live in Kentwood, and right now, there's two city commissioners' vacancies running for election, and this is an issue in our city. Because we've bonded for a library, we've bonded for a police department, you know, a new police courthouse. The challengers are contending that's debt. Well, it is debt, of course, but it's debt that's underwritten by the good faith and recognition of the voters who voted these millages in. So I would anticipate if this passes, this will be a notice of contention because I'm voting on increasing the debt level of our county, but that's the way we do business, so I'm just...
And we've done it many times in the past.
I know, yeah. That's the only way you can operate, it seems like.
The Franklin, building up Franklin for $27 million, which was a huge improvement for the county. And all we're trying to do, in my opinion, and from this report, is to improve the buildings within the county and also the uses of those buildings. Commissioner Talan, do you have a question?
Just a comment, Chair. I'm a long way, I think, from being comfortable with the numbers in all this. But I do recognize that I have had some assurances from staff that there will be numbers to show how this makes sense. They're not ready yet, and that this is an important step to start the process. Given all that, I'm willing to vote yes on this, but did want to just state my low comfort level with the way the numbers put together at this point.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Steck?
So I guess I'm the contrarian again. I certainly applaud the effort here to continue this study, the reasons for the analysis and for the ongoing efforts to explore. The projects that stand behind this are clearly solid, and the analysis is called for. My concern, though, is I think it is premature for us to adopt a notice of intent at this point. I'm unpersuaded of the arguments as to why we would do that before we've completed the due diligence analysis of the numbers suggested by my colleagues, and that the process of trying to recover and capture these costs can be accomplished in other ways. So I respectfully will probably not support this motion.
Commissioner Morgan?
May we have a roll call vote?
Certainly, Chair. Vice Chair Salfeld?
Right. I, thank you, Chair. I will support this. As noted, it does not bind the county, does not bind our board to proceed with any form of lending or any amount of lending. This is a process that takes place in talking with our Finance Department. This is the first step of the process, and there's going to be other opportunities to dig into this. I do think we have had some good discussion and background information on it. We all got the report back in June, space needs study, and I went back and I looked, and the Kent County Juvenile Detention Center was referenced on page 37 of that report, Kent County Correctional Facility Changes were referenced on page 35, the Community Reentry Center was mentioned on page 37, and the Ottawa Avenue site on page 22. The only thing that I don't think was specifically referenced was the courtroom renovations, but we have had discussions, in particular in the Judicial Resources Committee that's been meeting on that. So these have been talked about, the implication of what the sale of 82 Ionia would result in. It was not a deep dive, I fully understand that, but we did foresee that this would come out of that. Now, I'm a big believer in good fiscal conduct by our county, and I think that anybody that knows me knows that that's probably one of the main hallmarks that I think is great about what this commission does. I think it's great to move from leases to own buildings. I think it's great to move from old facilities that have a lot of maintenance and upkeep to new facilities that are much more efficient and can serve this county in a long-term period. And so I think that these changes are all moving us in the right direction as it relates to long-term good decisions. This is the first step in that process. We're going to have plenty of time to see how these numbers will, what these numbers will mean as far as our debt, as far as our bond rating, all those things. But I'll be happy to talk to any constituent that anybody here runs into that says this is us acquiring more debt because this is going to save money for the county in the long run. I can guarantee you that. And so I'm in favor of it for that reason. I would also note that we, you know, do, I do think this is a great time for doing this. A lot of people are saying that interest rates are likely to be edging up. The sooner we get moving on this, I think, the better. I personally talked about this issue with my township board a few weeks ago, and they all thought this was a great time to be moving forward on this and was once again demonstrating that we have an eye on what's good for the county in the long run and are moving in that direction. So for all those reasons, I will support this, and I appreciate those that don't fully feel that we have all those questions answered yet. We're going to, I'm told, we're going to have plenty of time to dig into those and talk about those questions, and I think you deserve to have those questions answered. But at this stage, I'm really ready to go forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with all the comments today. I want to first thank El Jeno for just a spectacular job. He's awesome. We are so lucky to have him. He did spend a lot of time with me yesterday going through these projects. I understand the need, I don't disagree with the space needs study. I am there on the need, with the exception of the new building. For me to notice my constituents that we're going to be bonding with their tax dollars, I have to be able to show that need. And until, until we are closing 82 Ionia and providing that need, I'm not there yet. So, so once that sale's complete and we can demonstrate that need, I think I'll be closer to that, but at this point in time, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. I look at this as one step in this process that moves the recommendations on page nine in that document. Commissioner Salfeld mentioned, that I'm looking at now. As the process continues, when I look at relocate to North Complex on a number of these points, and I look at the current plan, I'd like to see the plan really develop and expand, and I consider this, for all of this, and I just consider this one step of making this plan continue to move forward. So I will be supporting it today.
Thank you. Commissioner Reevee?
I just wanted to say, too, I agree with Commissioner Jones. You know, I will be supporting this today. I see it as a first step. After touring the juvenile facility, I definitely see there's a fairly desperate need for improvements and changes, and, you know, I like to see this as opening the conversation to even more detail and being proactive in our county.
Thank you. Anybody else? Couple of comments. First of all, I think now is the right time because of the volatility of the market. I've been hearing for a long time interest rates are going to move, so if we want to lock up the best possible and just right for the future, I think now is the best time to make that move. And secondly, I was told by someone straight ahead on the wall, Vern Ayler's, back in 2001, when I was first elected, Dan, you're elected to be a representative of the people from your area, but understand, they elected you for your judgment. So do what you think is in the best interest of the county at all times, and you'll do a great job. So that's what I try to do. Do what you think is in the best interest of the county at all times. And I think making this move now with this bond issue is what is in the best interest of Kent County right now to address all the needs that we have with our facilities. So with that, I'll call on the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Bolter?
No.
Reevee?
Yes.
Flukowski?
Yes.
Shevus?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Sofel?
Yes.
Schroll?
Yes.
Steck?
No.
Talan?
Yes.
Vonk?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes, that carries. I'll now call on Commissioner Flukowski.
I'd like to move Resolution 96, which is the appropriation of estimated revenues to the Parks Department 2015 general fund budget.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Flukowski, support by Vice Chair Salfeld. Questions or comments on this resolution? See nothing? This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bolter?
Yes.
Reevee?
Yes.
Flukowski?
Yes.
Shevus?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Sofel?
Yes.
Schroll?
Yes.
Steck?
Yes.
Talan?
Yes.
Vonk?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes, that carries. I'll now call on Commissioner Mast.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 97, which represents a few adjustments in the Park Department rates for the boat rentals and campground rentals. I move that resolution.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Mast, support by Vice Chair Salfeld. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Ponste?
Thank you, Chair. Corndyke, I don't oppose any of the fee increases, I just got more of a general question, not being on the Finance Committee. When we look at raising rates, do we ever do an analysis of saying, maybe we shouldn't be doing the paddle boats anymore? It's more headaches than the revenue brings in and stuff like that? Kind of analysis of what we provide, is there anything that we could provide that would be better for the community, and some maybe we should do without?
Welcome, Roger.
Good morning. The answers. The answers. Yeah, we do analyze things and how parks are used and what is appropriate. So in some cases, over the years, we've eliminated picnic areas because they weren't being used to their fullest anymore when it comes to these specifics. They are good business for us, and they are what the community wants, and particularly with paddle boards, that's definitely what people are looking for. So we've actually added a number of paddleboards over the last year, and that type of thing there's a line for, so the public likes it.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Softfeld?
Thank you, Chair. Roger, and I think this came up at our Finance Committee meeting. You do go around and kind of benchmark numbers to help guide you in deciding whether rates...
Absolutely. So every year, we look at other campgrounds, we look at other golf courses, we see where we fit in the market, and that's why you see these adjustments, so we stay at market and don't get below where we need to be.
Because I think, as a county, we certainly don't wanna be over-market. But at the same time, you know, I think for fiscal responsible reasons, we wanna be at or right around, maybe a little below-market to make sure that we're getting the value out of the services that we're providing. So, I thought that was an important point. Just wanted to make sure that was made.
Commissioner Bolter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To that point, I guess I struggle sometimes with government offering services that private businesses offer. And so if we are gonna do that, I would hope that we would, because the taxpayers subsidizing these services, be able to provide these at maybe a lower rate than the market. Because that is the benefit of doing it and having a government subsidized, you know, entity is that we would do it so that maybe families that can't afford to go to a fancier campground or a fancier park could afford and utilize our property. So, I, and I also just read a resolution that we just approved where we're doing great in exceeding expectations in some of our park revenue. So, I will be voting no on this. Thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy?
Thank you. Traditionally, we tend to look at the fees for various departments every two or three years. And I think we could start moving, you know, too forward on what we're charging, given that taxpayers are already paying for services through their taxes, by starting to do this on an annual basis. And it was just reviewed, many of these were just reviewed a year ago and increased, and here we are again. And I'm afraid that we may be moving ahead of what the cost can be, although, you know, I'm told right now that this is, you know, mirroring, mirrors the market rates in the area. But I see this as a bad trend to be moving on an annual basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
I think it's important to know that with our reservation system, we've already booked a lot into 2016. So, as we adjust rates, some of them will apply, you know. For those who haven't made reservations, it will apply. For those who've already made reservations, they get the rate that they made at the time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schroll?
Mr. Chair, can I ask for a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Anything else? Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. Roger, when we're looking at market analysis that indicates these are within the market, is the market made up of both private and public competitors, if you will?
Yes.
Anything else? Seeing nothing, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bolter?
No.
Breeby?
Yes.
Wachowski?
Yes.
Chivas?
Yes.
Hennessy?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Softfeld?
Yes.
Schroll?
Yes.
Steck?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes, that carries. I'll now call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to recommend to the Board of Commissioners the appointment of John Mathias to the Community Mental Health Authority Board, Network 180, to fill the unexpired three-year term ending March 31, 2018.
Support.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Steck, support by Commissioner Schroll. Questions or comments on this appointment? Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment. Had the pleasure of serving with John for a number of years, and he's been an outstanding member of the board, so I feel really good about this appointment.
Commissioner Steck?
Just to clarify, he has been a member, a non-voting member of the board pursuant to a policy and practice used at Network 180 that allows interested individuals to come in and sit for a period of time to, one, learn how we engage and what we're doing, and also for us to learn about him. So I think it's an excellent way for us to fully vet candidates such as John.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Mast?
I was gonna essentially say the same thing, but even though John was not able to vote on issues, he really participated in discussions, and really helped us out a lot, so...
Okay, anyone else? Commissioner Breeby?
I just wanted to support John as well, also serving on Network 180. He's done a great job in his position so far, and I'm looking forward to his approval today.
Great. Anybody else? All right, this is not a roll call vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. We're now at item 10. One comment, people have up to one minute from the public. You step to the podium, name and address, and anything you'd like to say to this board?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Catherine Henry, 806 Wildlife Trail Building, Michigan. Obviously not in Kent County, from Ionia County. The reason why I'm here today is because I just wanted to introduce myself and get to know some issues that are important to the people of Kent County, because I'm running for the 86th District House of Representatives seat, which some of you may know is partially, well, mostly Kent County and some of Ionia County. So, excuse me, I have something in my contact. So I will leave my cards there for just a little bit after the meeting, and I would like to introduce myself personally to as many of you as I can. But I'll be honest, I was not expecting as many people, because all the other boards I've gone to have about five people, so... A little bit more intimidating here. So, anyway, again, my name is Catherine Henry, and I do ask, if you do pick up my card, please. I have a Facebook, email, website. Please let me know whether you think you, you know, are on the same side of issues as I am. I wanna know what's important, what you think is important to your constituents, because I wanna know and be able to bring that to the Capitol should I win the election. By the way, it is not a November election. It is August 2, 2016, is the primary, and the incumbent is terming out, so I will not be running against the incumbent who is currently Lisa Lyons. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Right, seeing nothing, we are down to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Morgan?
I get to go first this time. Regarding the airport, I just wanted to make a few comments that we had a groundbreaking for the new FBO terminal from Landmark a couple of weeks ago. And that building will be constructed out there, and we've opened the fourth floor of the parking structure, and the new general aviation runway is operational. And I just wanted to report to the board that these agreements that we discussed this morning will be presented to our aeronautics board in draft form next week, and then forwarded to the...
Thank you. Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. The Grand Rapids DDA met last Wednesday and had quite a full agenda. I wanted to report on some of those items to you. We approved a streetscape incentive grant for the Brass Works Building, which is up on North Monroe. That's pretty exciting. Approved a grant for renovation of a building on East Fulton, right by Jefferson. It's the former Diplomat Pharmacy, an underutilized building for a number of years. So it'll be great to see that being renovated for a office use. You may remember the flooding of the Grand River, and one of the consequences of that was damage to the lighting on the bridges, and the DDA approved a partnership to repair some of that lighting. We also approved support for the HUD grant application, which we approved at this board. It's gone through approval to a number of different organizations, and the DDA added its support. And one of the things that I wanted to be sure you're aware of, I've talked about it before, and that's the possibility of building a theater downtown on what's currently Parking Area 5. The DDA approved a second extension for an option on that property. There's a lot of optimism that that still will happen, that it's gonna, it's actually expanded in scope, is my understanding. And in conjunction with that, we heard a report, there's considerable work being done on what to do about people getting to and from downtown, parking options, what to do about the loss of all that parking space when hopefully that development happens with the theater and the businesses and restaurants and apartments that will go along with it. So, there's a lot of work being done exploring what the options are there, and stay tuned. It's a pretty exciting project. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other reports? Then we'll move into Commissioner miscellaneous. Commissioner miscellaneous, Commissioner Wachowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick, today at 5 o'clock, if you'd like to come out and cut a ribbon on a sidewalk, of all things, might not think it's that exciting, but four miles of concrete was poured between Kalman Zoo Avenue and Patterson, connecting what Cascade Township already had done to other parts. The important is pointed out by both M.D. directors. Stidl will be there, in addition to Mayor-elect Bliss and Mayor Keppley from Grand Rapids and Kentwood, respectfully. So that's at 5 o'clock at the Christian Reform Church in North America, so right by the corner of Kalman Zoo, in Kalman Zoo and 28th Street. So, if you need more directions, let me know.
So the street that got you four miles was?
Oh, 28th Street, sorry. Sorry, my cold medication. So it's along 28th Street, and it's crazy when you see people out there now with strollers on that sidewalk. It's being used, and so it's, yeah, there's always been a lot of foot traffic on 28th Street, and they knew where to put the sidewalk, because all they did was follow the foot path that was worn in the ground. And there's such places around, and we're gonna continue to work on those with our various cities and municipalities.
Thank you. Other miscellaneous, Commissioner Mast?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to report, it's not a county board, but I belong to the Michigan State University Extension Advisory Council, and they are having a issues identification series. All of the Michigan State Extension districts are coming up with issues identification. There's a special session on November 4 that I'm gonna be part of, and District 7, which is Kent and Elegant and Ottawa, which is Betty Blaze, she's made some presentations here before, will be coordinating and issue us issues identification. Several of us have been invited to that, so hopefully we'll get some good issues identified.
Thank you. Other miscellaneous, Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. Not sure this isn't report versus miscellaneous, and sometime I'm gonna get the distinction in my head here which is which. Lake Shore Regional Partners finished out its year at the end of September. I believe that while we don't have a financial report, it is gonna end up reflecting that we will have incurred a loss in operations, but we will still be in the black with the reserves that we have. At the same time, we continue to do the conversation of redesigning the process and the structure, and look forward to a report from the state's analysis in November. The other big thing that's going on in November is the CEO of Search Process is going to kick in full bore, and we should know as we get near the end of November who the finalists are, or maybe even have a candidate.
Great, thank you for the report, Vice Chair Softfeld?
Right, our annual GOP caucus meeting will be held on November 30 at 6:00 p.m. at the Kent County GOP headquarters. This is a noticed meeting, which is why I make mention of it now. So if you're interested, we'll have you there. That's on November 30 at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Commissioner Shevvis?
This, thank you, Chair. This might have been a report as well. I just wanted to comment on the event that the Ag Board had last week commemorating the preservation of the Hall, Heliast and Frost Farms. Commissioner Mast and I both attended. And also, the Ag Board just received notice that they got $100,000 from American Farmland Trust. So, yeah, that's good money to continue preserving, particularly as after Peter Wuggie's death, his heirs have kind of reprioritized what they want his money to do, so...
Other miscellaneous, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you. Since Commissioner Shevvis brought that up, I did send emails to the elected officials in the district why I was not at that meeting, which was in my district, because I was at the area aging, the area for aging for the senior millage allocation process, which was something that if I wasn't there, I would not have been able to properly allocate and be a voice in allocating those dollars for our seniors. So with that conflict, I had to make that choice, but I did let them know I wasn't going to be there, and why, and because of the conflict. Thank you.
Thank you. Other miscellaneous?
Just a quick reminder that November and December are meetings on the first and the third Thursdays of the month, because of the holiday schedule.
With that, I'll call on Commissioner Shevvis.
Thank you, Chair. I move that we adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, November 5, 2015, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
Motion support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, for Chair?